I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Elkhorn Common Council to order. It's May 5th, 2025 at 5:30. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tim Sora?
Here.
Peter Harvey?
Here.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Here.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Here.
Scott McCory?
Here.
Ken Minell?
Here.
Dan Roberts?
Here.
Okay, next we have a public comment. Before I read my paragraph, is there anyone here that'd like to be heard? Okay, great, I'll, I'll read away here and then after I'm done, if you'd like to come up to the podium, take your turns, come up to the podium and speak, you have three minutes. Anyway, public comments are limited to three minutes each. The public may speak on any item of city concern, whether or not the topic is included on this agenda. However, if the topic does not pertain to an item listed on the council agenda, the council is not permitted to address or discuss the matter during this meeting. Under open meeting laws, the council must notice an item on the agenda to allow discussion on that matter. If council is not permitted to discuss your concerns, your comments will be considered and may be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. So who'd like to be first? Please, if you'd come up and state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Norma Batma and I live at 120-
Pull the microphone down.
My name is Norma Batma-
No, pull the microphone down, there you go.
This is better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Norma Batma and I live at 123 West Hidden Trail here in Elkhorn. This is a neighbor of mine, Marilyn Allen, and she also lives at 123 West Hidden Trail. We've had an issue for quite some time with a short area of a street on Hidden Trail that's on a curve where there's probably room for maybe two, maybe three maximum vehicles. And we've had an issue with a big truck, a truck with a kettle corn trailer, and it makes it difficult to come out of the driveway, coming out from that first driveway on Hidden Trail, and then subsequent, there's two more driveways on the other side, which would be on the east side of, of the, where these vehicles are parked. And the issue is that it's a, because it's a limited area to see, it poses a great hazard. And I've talked with Mr. Minell about it, and I think he has also discussed it with the street department. And I have also, besides me, there have been at least three or four others that have called the police about this situation. And our response from the police were that they couldn't issue tickets because there is not a, no parking sign there. So, and I do have an MP for video of the area. So if I can leave it here, fine, if I can't, I will take it back with me and then I will come to the council meeting at another date and announce myself. And, and there's also a school bus, or several school buses that come in that area that have a hard time letting children off on that corner of North Church Street, which dead ends on the north end. And the bus has to pull way in front of these vehicles in order to let the children off. So it's an accident waiting to happen and it's going to be a very sad day indeed if somebody gets killed there. So those are my comments and Marilyn agrees with this as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening, Karen Graham, 823 East Town Manor. I have lived in East Town Manor condo association for 22 years. I joined our HOA board as a vice president in 2023 to help provide a more proactive role to improve our subdivision. The condo association was established in 1981 and transferred to owners in 1986. Our homes consist of stick, modular, and prefab, with the last home constructed in 2004. Currently, EMCA compromises of 67 houses and one vacant lot, all paying monthly dues of $60. The association has a 140K in reserves and an annual budget of 40K to cover snow removal, road repairs, light repairs, fire hydrant maintenance, CPA charges, electric utilities, website and other expenses, with an additional 10K allocated strictly for reserves. EMCA dues were as high as $90 per month with paid board members and managers dating back to 2005. Since then, we have been able to reduce costs by eliminating positions and reducing the other cost. Despite these efforts, few volunteers are willing to serve on the board, with only a dozen of people attending annual HOA board meetings. Additionally, there are significant language barriers, as a significant portion of the residents are Spanish speaking. Given the challenges of managing the association, water issues, repair costs, snow removal, EMCA requests the City of Elkhorn consider dissolving the association and integrating into the city. This would involve the City of exploring the dissolution process and how the city can pride expenditures to improve the subdivision with previously collected tax dollars. This would also address the long-term issue of what could happen if the volunteer board members stop serving, which is current, which is crucial for the future of the community. If the City of Elkhorn does not agree to the dissolution of EMCA, respectfully request funding paid for by the previous taxes to assist in resolving financial concerns with road and utility maintenance. Please understand that a plan without dissolution means EMCA will have needs in the future. We would like to understand how the City of Elkhorn plans to address this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to be heard? Asking again, anyone? We'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. We have four items. Does anyone want to pull anything from the four? So we have the council meeting minutes of, from 4:15:25 and 4:21:25, a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license for the Walworth County Agricultural Society for the rodeo concert on May 26, 2025, from 1:00 to 9:00. And a TPA administrative services agreement between the City of Elkhorn and Consociat Incorporated Doing Business as Consociat Health, and a vendor contract between the State of Wisconsin Department of Administration and Elkhorn Light and Water to provide Wisconsin Home Energy Assistance Program.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McCory?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes. The consent agenda is passed. We've got report of city officers. For the mayor's report, the first item is that on your agenda tonight, items under new business, items I and J are being pulled from the agenda. They're just not quite ready yet, so we'll get back to those, I'm sure, on a future agenda. And next, we've got the appointment of Guy Finley to the Police and Fire Commission for a five-year term ending in May 2030. Everybody might remember Guy was one of the applicants for the Aldermanic seat that was open. So I would entertain a motion to-
I'll make a motion, second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guy Finley is appointed to the Police and Fire Commission. Next, we have the swearing-in of a new patrol officer, Cameron Rongstad. If you would come up? I think we'd like her to just stand right here. Yeah, if you'd just come right up and stand, get up here close.
Hi. If you wanted to raise your right hand and then state after me, so I, and state your name.
Aye, Cameron Rongstad.
Having been appointed to the office of patrol officer for the City of Elkhorn-
Having been appointed to the position of patrol officer for the City of Elkhorn-
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin-
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge-
And will faithfully and partially discharge-
The duties of set office to the best of my ability.
The duties of set office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Like to get a picture?
You want a picture?
Come on up, just maybe line up out there, maybe Teresa will take one, I don't know who, Matt, you take a picture?
So while they're getting their, the photo opportunity, and Cameron comes to us from East Troy. She just graduated from UW-Whitewater this past spring and most recently was working as a delivery driver, kind of tracked it out through Amazon. So we're excited to have Cameron. We're still looking for an academy. We have our fingers crossed that we might be able to get into Appleton. We're number one on the waiting list right now. If not, it will be Gateway here in August, but we're very excited for the opportunity to have Cameron join us.
Matt's behind you there, or however. All right, next we have the city administrator, Adam.
All right. Well, just a reminder, we've got the inaugural PD recognition dinner on May 14th at 6 o'clock. Again, hopefully everybody RSVP'd who is coming to that event. Also, just wanted to mention that, want to thank DPW for placing some sidewalk bricks and pavers downtown. That's, I know was a concern of some aldermen over the past couple of years and, as well as some of the downtown business owners. So thank you to Matt and his team for doing that. I know I spent pretty much all of last week working on that. And also want to thank Unilock who donated the, the pavers. How many pallets, Matt, did you say they gave us?
Six pallets.
Yeah, so thanks to Unilock for, for doing that. Just wanted to let council know, we did close a lot, 70 in the Business Park last, on April 25th, so that, that sale is done. And we are working on the terms of development agreement with Newman Development for the Sugar Creek Ridge Homes. There's just been a lot of back and forth while we've been working with elders. I have spent, I think, four hours today with Joe, it feels like, already, so maybe slight exaggeration, but, so we've been working with Joe on trying to get those numbers and so we should, fingers crossed, have a proposed term sheet for you to look at at the next council meeting, so. And that's it for me, mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we've got discussion of possible decision regarding proposed resolution number 2025-11, a resolution providing for the sale of approximately $3,820,000 general obligation promissory note series 2025A. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Scott McCory?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed resolution number 2025-12, a resolution providing for the sale of approximately $1,485,000 sewer system revenue bond series 2025B.
And just, just real quick, this one, we would ask that the council consider amending that from $1,485,000 down to $1,355,000. There was some additional cash that we could apply to reduce the amount of the, the bond sale, so just would ask that if, if there's a motion to approve that it'd be amended to include the $1,355,000.
I'll make the motion to approve with the amended amount of $1,355,000.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Scott McCory?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. We've got, next item, discussion of possible decision regarding proposed scope of engagement with Quarles &amp; Brady LLP to serve as bond counsel and disclosure counsel for a proposed issuance of $3.82 million. I'm not sure if that's right, $3,820,000. General obligation promissory note series 2025A at a cost of approximately $30,290.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Okay, thank you. Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Scott McCory?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. We've got a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed scope of engagement with Quarles &amp; Brady LLP to serve as bond counsel and disclosure counsel for the proposed issuance of, this number also changes now, $1,355,000 of sewer system revenue bond series 2025B at a cost of approximately $28,875.
Would the second amount need to be amended as well? And how much is that?
I don't think the slight change in the cost of the bond or the, I should say, the amount of the bond is going to actually impact the, the fee from the bond counsel, so.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to approve at the amended price of $1,355,000.
Second. Any, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Scott McCory?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we've got an update and discussion regarding status of the Centralea Water Treatment Plant Reservoir Bypass Project. Yeah, do you want to pull up it? Absolutely.
All right. Well, hello everyone, I'm Dale Breckert with Fole infrastructure. We are the engineers that do a lot of the drinking water work for the city. So giving the update on the Centralea bypass project and also what we're calling the entrained air discovery. So I'm going to move things along, I've got 23 slides, there's pictures, some videos, so it's going to be interesting, but it's going to be some really good content so everybody understands where we're at with the project and then the entrained air situation there. So a quick agenda, update on the bypass, talking about the work that's complete there and then some current photos of the inside of that failing reservoir that were taken in the last couple of weeks. We're going to talk about this entrained air that we came across, you're going to see a lot of pictures of what that really means and what that looks like. We're going to go over that and talk about how this wasn't known prior to going into this project. So some good and bad news on that topic and, and we're going to talk about some options and next steps. So the quick update here is the, the work is complete out there, the bypass is successfully in place. You can see a picture of the construction there, the, the blue pipe is the bypass itself and then the hydrant that I'm, that I bring up in the talk is the red hydrant you see towards the middle of the picture. So current state, the wells can now pump directly to the water treatment plant, bypassing the failing reservoir. The pumps are, were specially designed to be able to work under either a bypass condition or pump to the reservoir, either or. Those are working very well. And the system is currently able to provide emergency fire protection from the wells while the reservoir is offline, which it currently is. New flushing hydrant is now in place, that's the red hydrant you see there, that can provide direct flushing for both wells four and six, which they couldn't previously do on well four, varies, well, at all, what was required to meet DNR code. And there was also some other work that was come across within the treatment plant vault piping, there were several leaks found, that piping was replaced and repaired during the project. That's not in the picture. So a quick step back, the reservoir. Looking back at 2015, the interior pictures of that through the required DNR inspections showed that those I-beams on the roof is what you're looking at there, starting to have significant rust. In 2021, you guys have seen this picture before with the I-beam starting to drop. And then this is from the last couple of weeks when the reservoir was finally drained. And you can see holes in the roof, you can see a lot more of the I-beams have dropped in the past years. If you look carefully at the floor, you can see I-beams laying on the floor right now. So I'm personally very relieved that this isn't filled with water right now and it is empty and the concerns we have about the water coming out of this at a very fast rate are, are over. So let's switch gears to entrained air and I'm going to talk a little bit about this. So when the bypass pipe was put online for the first time and tested, it was discovered that water was entrained with air bubbles and similar to the picture you see there. It was assumed that this was related to trapped air in the piping, which is very common following construction, especially at high spots. So efforts were undergone to remove the trapped air pockets throughout all the piping. However, only minor improvements were gained when we did this, it still remained cloudy. And the cloudiness, you'll see some videos, but it sticks around from anywhere from 45 seconds to up to two minutes and then it goes totally clear. So more about this entrained air. Yeah, in the process, we were trying to figure out what was going on. So the utility and Fole staff worked our ways back to the wells themselves now that the air was removed from all the piping from construction. And the cloudy water still existed right at the wellheads at both four and six, which was a complete surprise. And this can sometimes be caused by air entering the well pump itself or leaking check valves in the column pipe of the well. However, the pumps are set significantly deep enough that we knew it wasn't air being sucked in and the check valves in column pipe are both new on these wells. So there's a very low probability or zero chance that it was an issue with the wells themselves. So this indicated it was coming from the aquifer. And tests were run at the other wells. We, we came up with a special kind of abnormal test to go to the other wells and provide a bunch of back pressure on them that they never pump against. And we were able to generate the same phenomenon with the, the cloudy looking water. So it's the first time ever that this was witnessed by utility staff or Fole within the system. So what is it? So we, we quickly, this was last week, the utility, Fole, and the DNR set up some meetings and started researching what this could be. It's, it was quickly determined it's, it's uncommon and very key resources and documents are out there on the specific topic. So we started making a lot of calls. DNR, you know, was scouring their archives. We talked to our teams across three states, we have not come across this before. DNR plan review team hadn't seen it and it's not regulated by the DNR. So I scoured my additional contacts within the industry. I've been in the industry for 20 years and I, I know some people that have been doing this a lot longer too and even people with 30 years' experience doing water, drinking water their entire career hadn't seen this before coming out of the aquifer. However, a 35-year experienced well driller, CTW, who did the work at four and six, did say he's seen this on very deep private wells before, but not on municipal. And then we did just, in the last couple of days, we were able to get ahold of a treatment equipment specialist that has come across it on occasion and was able to validate basically what we were seeing. The, the context actually encouraged us to document this as well as we could because it would be a, a really good presentation at a water association technical conference because it is that rare. So we, we went online to do some research. The DNR actually engaged in this very helpfully and we were able to find a few major utilities that deal with this at their wells and aquifers. In these cases, they are stating it's safe, you'll see in the videos I'm going to show you. And they serve it to their customers and they choose to serve it to the customer and provide public education on the topic. So I got two quick videos here, pretty interesting ones from New Jersey. New Jersey American Water is their utility and then the Cleveland, Ohio Water System. Here's the New Jersey public education. I don't know if the audio is going to work. Matthew, if there's a way to turn on the audio?
Play whatever's playing on your computer. Or you can send me a link to it?
Not that quickly, I'd have to do some searching. Well, what I can do here is I'll unplug the HDMI and then just let you listen to this.
... This will allow the air bubbles to rise to the surface of the water. Let's see the light. ... The top, right up here. Sorry. Nah, I just have to go, maybe go back. I'm over here and drive if you want.
Yeah, let me try that.
This works. At New Jersey American Water, our business is water.
Okay, doesn't seem to like the HDMI connection. So let me try to hold it up.
Let's put it into your mic. Put it on, yeah, your mic, pull the mic down.
So, this is unfortunate, my screen's gone black now.
At New Jersey American Water, our business is water. One question we are sometimes asked is, why is my water cloudy? Cloudy water occurs when there's a high concentration of air bubbles in water, giving the water a cloudy or milky appearance. This happens often during colder months because cold water holds more air than warm water. However, changes in pressure can cause cloudy water at any time. Though this water is safe to drink and meets all regulatory requirements, you can remove the air bubbles from your water by filling a container and letting it stand for a few moments uncovered. This will allow the air bubbles to rise to the surface of the water and evaporate, similar to a carbonated beverage. Learn more about cloudiness and the quality of your drinking water at newjerseyamwater.com.
Okay, so I think we're going to have a technical difficulty now because me plugging and unplugging this made my screen go black for some reason. So we'll see if it comes back when I'm plugging on your screens. So, we'll see if it comes back when I'm plugging on your screens. Anything on your end?
No.
No. All right, well.
I think it has power.
Yeah, yeah, let me try one thing. So, while this is rebooting up, what the video shows is basically them pouring the glass of water and explains that the key takeaway that we'll get into here once this is back up is they mentioned pressure change. And that's ultimately what was triggering. It was their temperature or pressure change in their case. So, we'll come back to that. But then they state to the the public, you know, this is this is safe. Give it time on the table, put it in a pitcher, let it clear up if you're if it's bothersome to drink. So, that's how they're dealing with it. Now here we go, back up. There we go. Okay, so you can see the video now. You you heard it before. This is how they're dealing with public education. They're basically telling the story, notifying the public it's totally safe, meets all federal requirements, and fill a container with water and let it stand for a few moments uncovered. And there they're showing a, I'm guessing that's 45 seconds to two minutes, explaining that it's very similar to carbonated water that would be in soda. So, the next one from Cleveland, Ohio, similar video. These are right on their water utility website. Sometimes the water coming in from your faucet can appear cloudy or white. This is just a result of the extra air in the in the water creating thousands of bubbles. Again, they mentioned that water temperature and pressure changes trigger this. Just rest the glass on the counter and watch the cloudiness appear from the bottom. And so, this is exactly what's going on here. And this is about a two-minute time lapse that they're showing. So, if you could hear this, there's some nice music playing. I mean, they they do a really good job for public engagement. Cheers. Yeah, cheers, Cleveland Water. So, again, just keep this in mind. We're going to talk a little bit about this. But we were able to pretty quickly find a couple of examples where this is a utility choice to, you know, use public education engagement to help relieve the concern. So, the last one here, this is they relied Tucson, California. They've mentioned here entrained air defined. If your tap water has slightly milky appearance, you're probably experiencing an interesting but harmless phenomenon called entrained air. The milky color in the water caused by tiny air bubbles is harmless and is related to the operation of city wells. The air is dissolved under pressure in the groundwater, much like carbon dioxide in a bottle of soda. How to detect? If your tap water is milky colored and you want to confirm you're experiencing entrained air, rinse out a clear glass twice and fill it with cold tap water. After a few moments, the water should begin to clear from the bottom of the glass to the top as the bubbles rise to the surface. If the water does not clear, please contact us. So, thought that was interesting thing to share, just, you know, with other utilities dealing with this. But it was not easy to find these. I'll be I'll be honest. This is rare. So, how wasn't this known, right? I mean, we're we're asking a lot of questions ourselves. How didn't we know this would occur? That's a great question. So, in the video, you you hear the references to pressure changes. So, with the bypass in in place, this is the first time that these particular wells out of your aquifer have pumped directly to the higher system pressure. Because by bypassing the reservoir, we went right to the water tower, if you can visualize that, rather than going to the reservoir or open tank. So, because of this, this phenomenon with the rapid change in pressure has flown below the radar all these years for your system. And now at the higher by pressure bypass pressure it is present, you can see it. So, you know, if if this was discovered during the original treatment plant design, this knowledge wasn't passed down to the city operational staff or clearly documented with DNR plan review archives. So, I'll show you something that's going to help visualize this. Industry standards or DNR well testing procedures do not require or commonly test for this. And like I mentioned before, it's not regulated by the DNR. They just call it entrained air. So, this is an interesting graphic I put together to help, I guess, paint the picture a little bit visually of how wasn't this known by the utility staff or anyone over the years. So, you're going to see in a minute four different videos that correlate to the four different colors. But if you can see my mouse, you can. This is a depiction of your centralia system. So, you have a well that's pulling from the aquifer down here around 450 feet when you're running the well. That the wells go through the chlorine building and that's where you're going to see the next video shot in the chlorine building. We're bypassing the reservoir, going through the treatment plant and into the system piping and then ultimately filling the water tower. So, what you see here is this green zone is very important. So, this is under 10 PSI or about 20 feet above ground is this area where this does not show up at all. You if you pour a beaker, fill a jar that you'll see in that green zone, and this is where all testing has ever been done by the city, it will be crystal clear. If you go above 10 PSI or about 20 feet and add more back pressure on the wells, this phenomenon starts to show up. And it shows up a little bit in that 10 to 20 PSI range. From 20 to 40, you start to get bubbles that you can't ignore and it looks cloudy. And then over 40 PSI is that very cloudy milky look where it's just thousands of micro bubbles. In what we found just in the last week of testing out there is that from the green, the green, there's nothing. Yellow and orange take about 45 seconds for the bubbles to dissipate. And if you get up into that red higher highest pressure area, which is where your water tower resides, it's about two minutes till that clears. So, here's a video. There's some audio, but that's not important if it doesn't work here. So, this is at 8 PSI. This is in the green zone. And this is this is why this was never known is because every sample or test that was ever done at any of your treatment plants lives in the green. And there's there's no bubbles that would ever be noticed. It's crystal clear. And this is the water that was ultimately filling these reservoirs. Okay, so if if you could hear the audio, there's a, we're talking through how much time till it's crystal clear. And this at at 8 PSI, this was, you know, clear right out of the gates. So, the next one, let's go up into the yellow zone, 10 to 20 PSI. And this has happened, this video happened to be taken at 17 PSI. Same exact sample tap. This is in that chlorine, same same spot for every video. Clear at first, and now it's interacting with atmospheric pressure. And you start to see some faint bubbles form. And that's not bad at all from what we've in comparison to what you're going to see in the orange and red areas coming up. So, that's about 45 seconds and it's completely clear. You can see the bubbles just working themselves out at the top and it's that bottom to up clarity as the videos were describing from the two big utilities. So, let's jump ahead to 28 PSI. Now, this is the first time it gets it gets heavy. And so, there seems to be a breakpoint that we're finding when you get over 20 that it's much more prevalent and I I think would definitely cause a complaint by a consumer if they didn't know what this was. So, here it hangs around. It's definitely more of a cloudy, light, milky color. And it's it's a very interesting thing because it just there's this breakpoint in the pressures where all of a sudden this shows up. Okay, so you can see it clearing from the bottom up. And again, you'll see this would go crystal clear if I kept the video running at about 45 seconds. So, jumping ahead to this is now your system pressure roughly. This is what if we put the bypass line, you know, right to system today, this is what it would look like on the tap now. It's going to right away, it's going to look pretty clear. And then you'll see it interacting with atmospheric pressure. And the entrained air is coming out of solution and forming micro bubbles, just like cracking the top of a seven-up. It's just a different version of that. We haven't, so this is sped up so we don't have to watch it for two minutes. My son is very good at video editing somehow, so he helped me with that. But you'll see this at two minutes, and at 30, and at 40. So, the unfortunate thing is that at your water tower pressure and your system pressure in Alcorn, it's in the red zone. So, if this were to go to customers, they're going to have the full two minutes.
And there's no and there's no way that we can adjust that. It has to be at 60 or above.
Yep.
So, that's what we're stuck with.
Yep. So, all of your water, well, you have two water towers in this zone. They float at that same height above ground and that's what triggers this 62 PSI.
Okay.
Yep. Your Lakeland Tower is at a higher pressure zone. It works a little differently, but it's the same concept. So, I hope that helps visualize the green zone specifically of how did operational staff or how didn't any testing pick this up? It's because everything was done under 10 PSI, which is completely the industry standard. So, moving on, summary of the discovery. The issue is not visible where all testing was performed in that green 0 to 10 PSI. This has prevented it from being discovered previously. This issue is not common. No standard testing procedures are designed for it or would detect it. With our brief research, only handful of communities have been identified that deal with this. The aerator reservoir, which were believed to be in place for typical ion oxidation and retention time, was actually masking and preventing the issue from being seen. It's not known if the previous engineers knew about the aquifer air entranement. DNR could not find record of it mentioned in any of the design records. And older plants like this and even newer plants, it's very common that they'll put a reservoir up in an aerator because old well pumps used to struggle to go all the way to system pressure. So, they would lift it up to ground level first, put it through an aerator to help oxidize and save some money with chlorine use. And then they would reboost with inexpensive booster pumps at the ground to fill your water tower. So, nothing raised a flag that there was some underlying air entranement in your aquifer because all of your treatment plants are set up like this to operate in that green zone. And then they get reboosted with separate pumps up to system pressure. Once it sits in the reservoir, it interacts with atmosphere for 40 seconds and this won't happen again. So, it's a very interesting coincidence, in in our opinion, that the reservoirs were there for a different reason, but they were actually preventing this from happening in the system at the same time. So, current state, you know, backing up, we'll summary of the the talk here. The failing reservoir reservoir is successfully offline. You saw the pictures, how it sits today. The bypass is fully functional and ready to go. It has a capacity of providing 1,300 plus gallons per minute. And right now, we could kick that on if a fire occurred or if you had a water main break, we could create that right now as emergency. It's not online right now, of course, because of the air entranement. We want to make sure we're communicating all of that. So, the current plan right now is to set the centralia wells and treatment plant on a standby type mode. And we can do this in the SCADA control system where the wells will only run if the system pressure drops to an emergency type level. So, if you can visualize a water tower, you normally operate, say, in the top five feet of that big tank. We can put a set point on well below that that would indicate you're either fighting a really big fire in town and you're drawing your tanks, your water towers down, and the other treatment plants are not keeping up with that. Or if you have a large water main break, you can drain your water towers pretty quick too. So, putting the set point on, even though there's entrained air right now, those wells would fire up and they would supply a lot of water really quick to your system. So, a little peace of mind with with where we're at right now in the discussion is that you have fire protection coming from centralia due to the bypass and it would definitely address you in an emergency. So, the investment to the bypass line was a valuable addition for the risk and resilience of your system in an emergency as it sits right now. Of course, we were hoping that this would not only provide you a bypass, but it would also provide you direct drinking water, meeting all standards, which we believe it will, but now you have this entrained air that snuck up on us. If the it's also notable that if the reservoir and aerator would have been repaired or rehabbed like we were talking about previously, the same bypass line and the flushing hydrant you saw in the photo would have still been installed through that work. We would have pushed for it very hard because this, for one, the bypass line is providing you fire protection if the reservoir is ever offline for maintenance or cleaning. And the hydrant that was there, which is connected to the bypass, allows you to flush well four, which you couldn't do directly before. So, in my opinion, the work that's been done, although we have this air entranement discussion to have, was a very good investment and would have been still done either way. It's just we were hoping it would take us the whole way there and we're taking a pause right now to talk about the air. So, good news and bad news. The failing reservoir is out of the equation, of course. The investment to the bypass pipe and code required well flushing hydrant were critical additions. These features should have always been part of the system to allow for reservoir maintenance and well flushing. So, we have that. And well fours and six can provide direct water to the system, although it's entrained with air right now, at a minimum, helping provide emergency fire protection or water main break protection. Bad news, it is now evident that the aerator and reservoir was preventing the cloudiness issue that we're witnessing. And there is no institutional knowledge or DNR records to document this, but we, you know, we we came across it by putting this online. So, due to the uncommon nature of the issue, it was not detectable with standard testing and hidden in the tent in that 10 is 0 to 10 PSI range, as you saw in the video. Yeah, and the other bad news is if the reservoir and aerator is not reinstated, we do not foresee this issue going away. This is just a physical phenomenon with your aquifer. When you go from deep in a well to your water tower level without a break in between. I should mention there is one treatment that we've heard of in the last couple of days. It's all quite new. But it's a it's a membrane-based skid, very sophisticated skid that has separate gases that feed through the membrane and strip the the air entranement off. Sounds extremely expensive and there's really no space to even entertain a large skid system like that, especially at these high flow rates. So, that that without putting the the reservoir and aerator back in place and making the assumption that a very expensive skid system and probably a new building to house that is not something that would be on the table. We wouldn't see this going away without the the reservoir coming back. So, options and next steps. Option one, as we saw with these other large utilities that deal with this, is to send it to system as is and provide public education. So, to do that, the next step would be, you know, if we were going to regularly put this out, we'd want to confirm the type of air entranement you specifically have in this aquifer. Is it CO2? Is it a different type of gas? So, we want to document that just to dot the i's, cross the t's, and then put together the educational videos. Personal opinion, residents in this area, you know, if you can visualize the centralia plant and then outward from there, they're going to be the the highest impact zone. I mean, they're going to truly have this cloudy water come out of the tap. Yeah, I think when we were doing testing on it, there was even a Yeah, I think when we were doing testing on it, there was even a, a couple that called in with the tests.
Yeah, we had two complaints. Our operators went over there, talked them through it, and they were pretty acceptance of the explanation, but.
Yep. Um, so option two then is, we re, you know, we, we say we don't wanna deal with this. Uh, from a public standpoint, is to rehabilitate and repair the existing aerator reservoir. And this would return the water aesthetics as previous, uh, and the first step in that would be to work with a tank specialist to create a repair plan and get bids and quotes in for review as, as soon as possible. There's a, yeah, one more note here. In the meantime, you know, between now and when that repair was ultimately made, we keep this bypass system in the automatic emergency standby mode like I talked about. So you still have, uh, you know, over thirteen-hundred gallons of men of fire protection coming from that site, and, uh, any kind of protection for a big water main break could be provided by that through the bypass. If that were to happen, you would be putting this air entrained water into the system for that emergency, and, you know, you could notify the public about that or, or do an effort to backflush that out if there was an instance. But I think it would be worth, uh, the water if you really needed it and the towers were that low. Yeah, Nate, Nate, you wanna talk about the KLM?
Yeah, so I guess to kinda speak about a tank specialist, I've been having calls with, uh, KLM, Dewey Prinzing over there. Uh, they specialize on, on tanks and tank rehabilitations. I thought it was important to figure out if this could be repaired, how quickly it could re, be repaired, and then mainly just kinda give me some ballpark costs. So I don't have nothing on writing as far as costs. I was able to get some verbals. I think it's only fair to talk about. So he was giving us a range of one-point-three-eight to one-point-five-four million to rehabilitate the reservoir. Now, that would be like a new roof, and it being recoded as well. You have to blast, blast the coatings on the inside and exterior, and then they also get three coats of, of coatings to protect it. But also with that, it'd be about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the create the specs, they call it the plans, the specs, and then a third-party inspection after they got the bid docs put together and everything like that. So they would come back in after a contractor was awarded, then KLM would inspect it. Us operators, we're not, we're not the experts when it comes to coatings. Coatings is a pretty industry-specific item that you wanna be, you have to be NACE certified, NACE certified, and that would be KLM. So, I mean, I just think that that was fair, and I guess to kinda talk about costs in general as to where we're at in Centralia as a whole, we're approximately about a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars into the bypass project, just to kinda give you guys a, an idea of where things are at, and where things would be. Well, I think that's kinda real important to know. We have the Lakeland project coming online or coming out here real soon that you guys are aware of. Well, that gets us into a little bit of a sticky situation, right? Because at some point Lakeland's gotta get turned offline to complete the work at Lakeland, and then we're stuck with substantial completion dates and final completion dates. And we would need water at our Centralia plant to take Lakeland offline. So hopefully, I mean, talking with Dewey, I mean, it could be tight. It's possible that we could still get this project done, done this year. Um, it'd be, it'd be super tight, but a couple of things that we could do, say we could get this done, and there's a little bit of an overlap in between getting Centralia online and the Lakeland being offline. An option would be to kinda send water to system, use public notification, get out in front of that for the sake of one to two months. But it's possible we can work with the contractor as well and adjust schedules, because obviously we know contractors, right? Warmer weather is a premium, so if they can get all the site work done and the building expansion completed, and say it's only September fifteenth, I'm guessing they got another project they'd like to, to try and get wrapped up and put in inside some winter comes that they can perform their inside work. So I think there's a couple avenues that, that we, we can, we can work with. But what we really need is kind of an okay to start working with KLM to help put plans and specs together so we can get costs and kinda maybe get this out to bid. That's kinda what I got as far as working with the tank specialist at the moment.
So did they indicate approximately time to do this?
At first, when I kinda pushed them on it, I said, did the ship sail on this? Are we done? You know, or is this next year? First was like, well, yeah, I think the ship sailed on this. And then he kinda came back. He said, you know, we, we, we could probably do this. I don't know how that's gonna work with the, the public bidding, though, you know?
I was gonna say, are there other people besides K, KLM?
Yeah, so KLM could help really put the plans and the specs and the bid documents together. They could inspect, and then we would have to advertise to the outside to get the contractors to, to come in.
And with this kind of money, you would definitely wanna do that.
Yeah. Yeah, KLM is extremely reputable in this type of specialty work. We've, we've partnered with them. You've had tank inspections done in Elkhorn with them. A lot of our clients really like KLM. They act as a consultant, similar to FOTH, but they specialize in this type of stuff with coatings and structural repairs of tanks. So, um, this is something that FOTH wouldn't add value to. This is something that we would recommend it go through a specialty consultant like that, and then they assist with the bidding process and all of that along the way, just like we would do on a, you know, one of these other jobs, very similar.
What's the cost involved to get the water tested to confirm all the gases are inert or safe, or whatever words you wanna use?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we're, we're trying, yeah, we're trying to get a lab, this isn't common. So we're trying to find a lab here locally, ideally, that is familiar with this kind of testing. We, or I think Nate, you, you called Northern, which is your normal lab.
We call Northern, and they don't do it. They say they subcontract it out, but we haven't had any luck being able to reach out to someone to actually come in and take the dissolved gases. It sounds like it's a little bit of a process. Um, samples have to be taken underwater. You don't want the gases be in exchange before you get the sample.
But if the company you contacted says they subcontract with a third vendor, they should really give us the name of the vendor, right?
Yeah. I mean, this is so new, this all within the last few working days.
Oh, okay. I'd like, I'd like to know what that cost is. You know, is it ten thousand dollars? Is it two thousand dollars? Is it a hundred thousand dollars? I mean?
Oh, for the, uh, no, I, I mean, if I had to off the hip, give you a, a safe number, I think it's gonna be five to six thousand for testing, something like this would be my guess.
Okay.
Um, just comparing it to sampling things.
No, isn't there also the ability? Is there also the ability to possibly have a portable type reservoir brought in that we could use in the meantime when the treatment, when Lakeland goes off?
Yeah, so it, it's tricky. Um, I talked about this forty-five seconds in the two minutes, so we would be looking at a reservoir big enough to bring wa- well water in at a very high rate, and then still have a forty-five-minute retention time in a smaller tank. Uh, meanwhile, it's being sucked out by the booster pumps again. So we, we thought about this. Again, we're a few days into the reality of trying to wrap our head around options. But a smaller tank, we need to be very cautious with that, just.
Well, I didn't say smaller.
Oh, okay.
I never said smaller.
Portable.
Tempor- portable.
So kinda, kinda touch on this base on that point. I wanna say, last time I was here, we were talking about if we had issues at the north end of town and we lost pressure, what could we do? Could we get a portable tank? And I wanna say at that time, I was working with Waterwell Solutions, and I said, hey, but I need the largest tank you can have. And I wanna say it was only like fifteen or twenty thousand gallons. Like, that's what they would have for like a portable.
And what's the reservoir?
Five-five thousand gallons.
It's a big reservoir.
A little different.
But it could be looked into as, you know, there's gonna be companies that's do that.
Yeah.
Um, more on a national level, something they could bring in.
That's where I'm going with it, is we gotta think outside the box here, guys.
Yeah.
What are the alternatives?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And speed.
Yep.
Well, it would appear, unless I'm missing something, that we're not in any position to make any kind of real decision tonight. We, we need, we need a lot of, a lot of numbers, and we need dates and weeks, and here's our vendor, and here's how much it would cost. I mean, we need all that information before we can make an informed decision.
I agree with that.
I think Dewey is working on a proposal for you guys, right?
I gotta be able to give him the green light to do that.
Okay. We could request a, just a cost proposal, though.
Yeah, and I think, uh, part of it tonight was to tell accounts, obviously, what happened, explain how we got to where we're at, what the options are moving forward. There wasn't a, the intent wasn't that the council was gonna authorize expenditure of funds, because obviously that would be on the agenda, as, as Dale said. We'd have to get a specific proposal, a task order from KLM to do the actual engineering work for the specs and the bid documents, if you go that route. Part of the intent was not only to tell you what happened, but also to get some guidance in the sense of if your, if your answer is, you know what, we're fine with the way the water is, as long as we verify that, you know, the cloudiness is safe, then don't worry about anything else, then, okay, then that's the way we'll move. It's, hey, we're concerned about the cloudiness. We want to explore other options to deal with it. Then, you know, that's the direction we'll, we'll move. But again, we are gonna, we were gonna have to come back regardless with the task order from KLM, as well as exploring other options, and, and to both Nate and Dale's, uh, point, and to their credit, they've done a tremendous amount of research on this in a very, very, very short period of time. So this all just came up within the last ten days. And I, I wanna thank Dale, because, uh, I just asked him about doing this presentation last Friday morning, so, so Dale put this all together in a very, very short period of time. So I'm, I could tell you, we're obviously working with the weekend on it, so. But anyway, so, yeah, we, we understand we'll have to come back.
So, uh, my thought process is everything's on the table. That's what it should be, right? Everything should be on the table right now. Every avenue needs to be gone down. We should not be settling on anything at this point.
I think, I think, I think it'd be prudent to have, uh, staff, probably Cory, sorry, be, be, be prepared by the next council meeting, because I assume they're gonna have some kind of an update in two weeks for us, something, I hope. I'd like to know if, in fact, we go to option B, where is this one-point-five or one-point-eight million dollars coming from if we go that route? Sorry, Cory.
Yeah, and I'm actually glad you brought that up, because during, during this presentation, that's something I was gonna mention, too, which is we didn't even get this estimate about the one-and-a-half million until, what?
Forty-five minutes.
Yeah. So unfortunately, we, because that's the question we'd like to work with elders on and say, hey, in terms of, do we, do we have the revenues in the water fund to be able to cover issuing an additional one-and-a-half to two million dollars in debt? Because we obviously hadn't planned on that. So we, we do wanna get that information.
Yeah.
Um, because we understand that could come into, will, will come into, uh, you know, your discussion and consideration, whether the city, you know, is that something where the city has to wait six months to a year or longer to address it until the funding is available, so.
Okay.
Well, it's got, they gotta get the supplier to get the, the cost and everything else to do it. Right now, they don't have a, a one-hundred percent solution. They're still trying to find a third party to do it. So they don't, they don't even have all that information for us.
But we would, we would hope in the next day or two, we would have a, a spectrum of testing for the, the gases, then a, a lab lined up that could give us a quote. So it's probably one or two days.
I, I think if I'm understanding Peter correctly, what he's advocating for is a motion that would include not to exceed X amount, five thousand dollars or something, to get the water tested before the next meeting.
We don't have a choice. So, I mean, we'll have to.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah. So what happens if it's sixty-two hundred dollars? No, we're gonna be waiting. I, I would suggest maybe you oughta amend your motion to not exceed ten thousand dollars, to give them more like wiggle room.
And then the vendor says, how much can you spend? And they charge us nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars.
Well, it's not necessarily that, but I'm just saying, we've, we've been in this position before. So they're good stu-, they're good stewards of our money.
I amend my motion to ten thousand dollars.
I'm not gonna amend my second. He said it was gonna be maybe two thousand. I'm not gonna say now it's ten thousand.
Not, it's not to exceed.
He said maximum five to six.
Six was my guess.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to include that up to ten thousand. Everyone, everyone gets shocked when the bill comes in at ninety-eight fifty, and you can quote me on that.
All right, we've got a, um, a motion, an amended motion and an amended second. We need to approve the amendment first. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and now we've got an amended motion and second to approve the motion. Any further discussion?
Does it need to be a roll call vote since money's involved? I assume the answer is yes. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Peter Harvey?
Yes.
Scott McCrory?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck, gentlemen.
I, I've got a question before, before you go. Um, we are told here over and over again that it is beneficial to build new rather than try to rehab something old. This building would be an example of that. Is there, is there a thought process about building a new reservoir rather than try to rehab that thing? It's pretty decrepit.
From?
I mean, you know, just build a new reservoir, tear the old one down.
From what the old report from twenty-twenty-one stated, the sidewalls are good, the piping's all good. It's pretty much the roof that's, and the coatings that are in bad shape. And obviously, there's an aerator on that, on that, too. And that was not even part of the discussion earlier. That, like, that's not part of the cost that KLM gave me. We'd have to find other costs on the aerator to rehab that. So is it cheaper? I've, I've been told no. It costs twice as much to tear it down and build something new. Could we maybe go smaller? I don't know. Maybe that's an avenue that we could look to try and.
Do you remember, Nate, from the twenty-twenty write-up, when they said that the, the walls, quote-unquote, were good? Did they have a age or year attached to that? Like, good for another ten years, or? I think that's where Tim's going. Is, what does good mean? Is it twenty-thirty, it's getting, you know, it's falling apart again, or?
Well, one thing, well, Nate's thinking, on the photos, let me just go back to this quick, but not going ahead.
Honestly, I think if you coat it, you're probably good for twenty, twenty-five years. Coatings are supposed to last twenty, twenty-five years. Somewhere in the fifteen to twenty range, they do, they start to peel and fail.
Okay.
If you were to do this, I would think yes, for twenty years, you're in good shape. And I don't know if there's some maintenance that can be provided, if there's mildew building up, if we can get it cleaned, if we can kinda keep it off. Maybe there's ways to even make those coatings last longer. I've been talking with a, another vendor, um, kinda what they kinda go through before your tanks get in a terrible condition, where you have to re-blast and recoat, because, you know, that's where the money, there's a lot of money involved in that. They tried and just roll another top coat over, get another top coat over, touch it up before it gets to that point where the rust is showing, and they have to like blast and coat. So, I mean, those are other avenues we could explore as well, if, if, if it was, um, recoded and redone.
I would just say, you made a comment about possibly quoting a new one smaller. I would not do that.
Fair enough.
Don't do that, because right now, you know what this does. You, you may not solve the problem if you go smaller.
Sure.
And you're just wasting money.
Right. Well, and to kinda follow up with that, too, when we did drain down, we did realize probably the top four feet or so was not utilized. The overflow was there, so that probably gives that the space, and then the dissolved gas is probably passed through. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone got anything else? Okay, thank you. Next, we've got a discussion regarding requests from Easttown Manor condo association to dedicate private streets and water sewer lines to the city of Elkhorn. Would like to start this. We've all, we've all heard, we've all heard Karen a couple times.
Yes, a few times.
The history of this is that that subdivision was built, and it's a private association. We do not provide plowing. We provide water. We provide water in one large pipe. Is it a four-inch pipe? Does anyone know that? Matt, Nate, maybe even? For Easttown Manor, and then you distribute the water out.
One main, one main, but nobody even knows how old that main is and how, like...
How one was listed.
Yeah, well, it was even checked, like, the meter, like, is that correct? To a current rate, that would be in charge, like, three years ago?
Yeah, but those streets, the cities with, they're not, they don't qualify as a city street.
Okay. Hey, Karen, could you maybe come up and sit, sit at the desk? Maybe if we have questions about Easttown Manor, maybe you could help us out? You're, you're the authority.
My question was, like, how would we know as an association, if the meter was replaced, how do we get notified that it was changed or updated?
Usually, we reach out to your guys' representative, which at the time was the president of your HOA.
Okay.
So let them know, because there's an interruption of service, it was more about the RSH of service than... So then we just deal, we would let them know, and if we've got that going on, and then I think that process could happen.
Okay.
The, you change your water meters in every house? I thought you told me that?
Yep.
Over the last few years?
We updated all the houses, have new, basically wireless read-in water meters. So basically, we got a third party that fill, but it's, it's all wireless.
Okay. Would, would those be compatible with our system, or?
That's a good question. That's why we're here.
I mean, we, we don't know that, so...
I don't even know if it is. I mean, it's a pretty newer system, so, I mean, if your system's not that outdated, or, like, these are installed two, two years ago, so it's pretty up to date.
This is a business called, our third-party vendor is Metron.
Yeah, I believe that you guys did install Metron meters, which we also use those, those are our second choice for meters.
Perfect.
We like to have two brands in case there's something that's wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
They should be compatible with ours.
So the problem with the meters, and because of the homes that are out there, we wanted to have turn-off valves, but they were not weather-compatible with those homes.
Some of the homes, like you said, are trailer, so they suggested that since it doesn't get on the ground, or people have houses that have whole basement, it might freeze. So that's why we decided that we're just gonna go with all the regular, regular meters. So, that's why.
So then the problem that poses with that is the people who are delinquent with paying their water bills. And that poses another problem with lawyer fees, and they still get to get the water, and all of us residents have to pay for their water out of our reserves.
Yeah. So we gotta wait till they get to a certain amount to even take them to small claims or whatever it is. But, like, how else do we shut the water at that point? And then plus, I figured there's a thing where you can't shut the water off, like, from November, I'm guessing, probably May, or something like that?
Yeah.
I have a question for Matt.
Absolutely.
Matt, if we, the streets that are now in that area, in that area, are they the width that we require for a city street?
No, and I look, I think according to the memo that Kapoor put together, that they do have curb and gutter, but it's, it's, I believe it was overlaid because of several courses of asphalt just being put over top. And so the, the maintenance wasn't to, like, mill and pave, it was just, was to pave, so the curb's been paved over. So it's more like a rural section than it is an urban section, so. And the width back at curb to back at curb, I believe you mentioned, was like 28 feet, so that wouldn't be our standard.
It was our standard.
28 face-to-face.
Face of curb.
I did question that. Green Acres is part of Elkhorn, correct? Our roads are bigger than Green Acres. So if you're gonna throw that out there, how is it possible Green Acres even associated with the size of the road?
At one time, they did have them updated, correct? Green Acres.
But our road is still wider than Green Acres, is my point.
That's true, that they're there.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, because the size of the road are still bigger than Green Acres are.
Hold on a second. Who are you?
I'm the driver of Easttown.
You should come up here and join, because, because no one can hear anything on the video. We need to hear who you are. And Matt, can you bring the map back up, please? Sure. And what was your name?
I'm Joe.
Joe, okay, so I talked to you.
Yeah, I'm Joe Gonzalez. I'm the treasurer of Easttown Manor. I live in 822.
All right, so Joe, you said to me on the phone a couple weeks back, maybe a couple weeks, that there was also an ability, there was an easement to have another exit or entrance off of Highway H. Where is that?
So, can, see where that...
Just walk up to the map. Be a lot easier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what we've been thinking, like you said, we can't really go anywhere else, but we do have this lot from this area that can go to where H is. This is all, I know, because I mow this all the time. I take care of this property.
But there's a piece of property right there, YPI, right there by the legend?
This is Pines.
I know, but right there on that corner, somebody else owns that corner.
But see, we don't know what, this is where the issue is. We don't know how much degree of a gap we have.
I'm gonna say you don't have a gap.
There you go.
So you...
We do have an issue.
Because one of the questions that came up during conversation with Joe was that they were able to add another entrance-exit versus just have the one in, one out, but this map says you can't do that. So you're still limited to one in?
One in, one out. But like I said, I didn't know at that point how the map shaped out.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, Ken, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to get that straightened up.
Sure.
So the last time we talked about this, if I recall correctly, I want to say 3.5 was the number that was bounced around, if I remember correctly?
3.6.
3.6 now, okay, fair enough. And, and, and so where would that money come from? If we were to even consider doing this? Where, where has that 3.6 come from?
We've still been paying taxes for over 26 years to you. We're still, I mean, so you still have money from us, because you're not, you know, still have our tax money, but you...
Well, we have your tax money because of some of the city services that we provide for you.
What services?
It's water.
Just the water.
Fire and police.
Fire and police and water is part of your service.
We'll have to maintain our fire hydrants to pay for that.
And school. I'm sorry?
We still maintain, we have to pay for our fire hydrants as well.
Like I said, I'm just asking where that money's coming from.
That's a fair question. But it's a convoluted thing, and it's not, it's not your folks' fault. I'm sure you weren't there, and when did they say, the 80, early 80s?
One.
81.
It's almost 40-some years we've been paying taxes, and, I mean, I guess if you think about...
In comparison to the pines, we're only like $1,000 in comparison behind for taxes to be part of the city. They pay $1,000 more roughly than what we pay a year.
In taxes.
In taxes.
You're saying your property taxes are lower?
Probably roughly, depending on what type of house, if it's, you know, attached or detached garage, but they're about $1,000 lower than the pines.
I'm due to this, so I got a question for you guys.
What?
How, how many?
Ludwell Estates is not ours.
No, okay, okay.
So, I need to read, do you have another question? He just wants to know how many other condo associations are there? That was his question.
I don't know, I'm talking about how many condos we have in the city, but obviously we have more than just, than, more than just Easttown, so, yes.
Yeah, you got Belinski's, you got Evergreen Estates, where I'm at out there. It's all condos. And Belinski's building more.
But how many of those associations are not already part of the city, like 100%? Like, you know, like, we do their roads, we do their fire-water. Joel's shaking his head, no.
Well, we, we pay for our own plowing, you know, we have the garbage pickup.
Right.
And we have naturally city sewer and water.
Okay. So there's at least, so there's at least two or three that we know of then?
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
Right.
Do you, do you have your own water meter, Ken?
Yes.
Per unit?
Yes. I think they can verify that, yeah. Everybody does, yes.
And then, and then when you say you do your own plowing, those are parking lots, not streets?
No, we don't, we don't have a street. We have an entrance, all right, on the Potter Road. We have two entrances on the Potter Road.
Yeah, but they're, they're basically parking lots.
Right.
Rather than streets and that.
We had to pay to, we just redone all of the parking inside, everything we have. So we just redone that here two years ago or so. And that's up to us for the upkeep.
How many people are in your condo, do you know?
There's 32 units.
So about half of what they have.
Yeah. I guess 32.
I believe, like, this area would be, would be another example. Sweetbrier is a private street, doesn't have sidewalks. It might along one side of the road, and then maybe over here too, this side, where they maintain their own roads.
Mm-hmm.
As well as Alexandria. As well as Alexandria, yeah, yeah. Same thing with, with these. I think these are, this is like Dillon Drive or something like that, possibly. So a question that... Oh, there it is, right there, yeah, that's Alex. It sounds like maybe the... Here's Dillon right here. Maybe the bigger issue right now is the fact that they can't get everybody to pay their water bill. And if there's a way to connect or merge the water, their meters with our meters, that would probably solve a lot of the association problems?
Correct, because it, just from, even before I got there, it seems like it's always been an issue in that association is, how is the water gonna get paid?
The tricky part is, is, is right now, there's no way to shut it, shut their water off. So if someone's delinquent on their bill, they don't have any valves out there to shut them off. Whereas every resident has a Buffalo box, so...
Yeah, yeah, we do. It's just, some of them are either, like, under the house, or by somewhere hidden in the driveway. It's just, monitor it, make sure, because all it is, is you can take a wrench or a socket and just take it and open it and close it yourself, pretty much. So, that's, like I said, we do have them, though. I understand what you're saying, but...
I see, okay, I thought you'd mentioned before that you didn't have them, because it was too shallow or something. That was my mistake.
No, no, we have them. I actually have one right in my driveway.
What kind of cost would it, would it be to try to get them to go completely with the city, just, just with water? To merge, or whatever you want to call it, the infrastructure or whatever? There's gotta be a cost involved with that, obviously.
I think the, if it's okay, I think the cost estimate kind of speaks to that a little bit. It's broken out into sections, so we talked about the age of the system a little bit. Here's the water, the water system will be replaced. Looks like it's about $1 million.
How much is your HOA dues?
60.
Huh?
60.
A month.
60 a month.
Ours is 300.
A month.
300.
So the...
And I think Belinski's is 280, somewhere in there.
The problem is even getting people to pay the $60 a month along with the water bill is also an issue. We have one homeowner who's $8,000 in the hole, that's currently going into foreclosure. So Belinski, Easttown are two different socioeconomic statuses. So you gotta look at that level, too.
I agree, I agree.
So, that'd be like Belinski and Geneva National, for example. It's a whole different ball of wax.
I would think you guys would have something in your bylaws. If not, you should pass them, to make it so you can shut people's water off when they don't pay the bill. And if they don't show up to vote on it, and only five of you show up, it still passes.
Yeah.
You know, it's, I mean, if you guys are gonna let people just do it, let me know where I can run a garden hose, and let you pay my water bill. I mean...
No, that's probably just letting do it, but like I said, supervise it. Like I said, all you can, you can go out and do it yourself in your own house, just take a wrench and open it and close it, like, it's, I'm not paid to be a babysitter for every other resident. I got a full-time job, I do this stuff to help.
I understand that, but you guys bought into an HOA. Whenever you bought your house, it was already there. So everybody that bought, buys into that clearly knows what you're buying into. And I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, but you, you know it's there.
Correct.
And you know that, you know, I could tell you right now, if Scott and I had lived next to each other, and we're both doing it, and Scott's not paying his water bill, I'm saying, hey dude, you're not paying your water bill, which means now I gotta pay it. That doesn't fly from a good neighbor's standpoint.
Correct, we understand that, but not everybody else understands that.
Well, you can't choose, sometimes you can't choose your neighbors. But, so, so what do we need? If the city was to take over the water bills, we need, somebody explain to me the, is there a locking meter or a locking valve when you shut off the water?
Just at the main.
That's what I'm saying.
But in residential.
Put all that stuff in there. That's what I'm saying.
What do we, what would have to happen, I guess?
So do we have to change out 63?
Well, if you already said that, our meters are already capable to go to you guys' waters. I mean, you guys said you guys use Metron for your second, so I don't really think the cost efficiency would even be that much, because we have all the info that you would need to transfer that Metron data to your current data that you're using already, if I'm correct.
Yeah, but you'd have to put your... I'm Nate, I'm the water superintendent here. I don't, cut yourself. I wish we would have had a better circumstances.
Oh, no, no, I'm tough that.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, like, if you're saying you're having trouble shutting people off, how would we shut people off, then?
Well, how, how does Elkhorn deal with current people that don't pay?
We go right to their curb stop and shut them off. They don't have a wrench to get on their, their curb box.
So we need a different curb stop.
That would go back to implying that you would need 63 curb stops and the corpse to go with it, or the curb stops to go with it, not the corpse, sorry.
That was the mid, that was the $1 million you showed us on that?
I don't think that's on there, is there, Matt?
Curb stop box right here, one inch, 40,000.
40,000 dollars.
That's just for them, that's not to dig it up, right?
There's 67 residents out there? That's what this number is? So this would be for, one curb stop for every resident. I mean, Kapoor probably should revisit this number. It's, we've had us put together back in April of '24, so it's been a little bit.
So a new construction would be cheaper than if you had, if you were just replacing the curb stops? That's gonna be a lot more per...
So, yeah, they're replacing the main, they're replacing the service, so as they're replacing the service, they're putting in the curb stop. Now they're stuck going back in and just attaching a, a new curb stop to an existing service. So it's a, it's a dig here, it's a dig, so that would be a different number. And it's a smaller project, too, so that 40,000 could, could go to 80,000. I mean, I don't know, Mike, if you have a...
But 80,000's better than 3 million.
Yeah. I, I guess, just for clarification, so, you know, we, we can get an estimate as to what it would cost to integrate the water system, and that's something that we could get a cost for. I would imagine though we would look to your association to cover those costs, those engineering, uh, costs, so. But I, I guess just for clarification, you know, is that going to satisfy what, you know, is this, the condo association gonna be okay with that? Is, or are you guys really looking to dissolve and turn over everything?
We want some, some options so we can talk to the residents, to give them, fill them in, like, this is what...
What our options are.
Yeah, these are what Alcorn is saying are, are, are options to do, or, you know, what do you suggest we do? We just, I, I personally am here just to get information as, as, as what, what can we do to Alcorn to help Alcorn? And then what can Alcorn do to help us in return? Like I said, if we gotta, if we gotta cover the cost of putting eighty thousand dollars worth of curb stops, okay, we'll, we'll cover, we'll cover the cost for putting sixty-six units. We actually have sixty, sixty, we have sixty-seven, uh, properties, but sixty-six units, so we only need sixty-six, uh, units.
Yeah, you can do a special assessment for the membership.
Oh, I'm aware of that. You wanna come with to a board meeting and...
But, but, but if we're able, if you're able to get this water situation resolved, does that take care of like eighty percent, ninety percent of your guys' pain?
Quite a big part of it, the other part is, uh, our board is volunteer. The other part is getting people to be a part of the board to run the subdivision to...
But that's not our issue.
I know, I'm just saying, but once...
HOA volunteers are across the country.
Right.
I mean, unless you live in Beverly Hills, they actually pay you.
But I'm just saying, like, once I'm done and moved out of there, there probably will be an issue, because there are quite a few, um, Hispanic families in there, there, there's a big language barrier, and they don't comprehend all of the legalities of this, so...
And again, I'm, no offense, but that's not our issue.
No, you're correct, but it is an issue.
It is an, it is an issue, but it's not our issue.
At some point, whether it's you guys or another board that comes after you.
Are we, are we currently billing the residents out there for their electricity?
Yes.
They get a city bill?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be that difficult to add water if we got the curb stops done?
I think there's also, I'll call it a fee, that's for sewer hookup, for each individual house, that would have to be taken into consideration as well.
Are we, are we currently billing for sewer?
Yes.
Just for...
It's a lump sum.
Lump sum?
For the whole association, and they all get a cut.
Yeah, so basically, if you get an eight-thousand-dollar bill, we're paying for all sixty-six units. But that's what the meters come in and monitor each, in charge of each individual unit about what they, what they're using.
Right, right, their average, and, uh, average monthly, yeah.
Would there be impact fees for each lot for water and sewer when they convert it over?
No. No.
You guys have your own garbage?
No.
No.
Your part of the city.
Our garbage?
Part of the city, yeah.
And you're, you're getting billed for that on your, on your bill?
Each property owner's getting billed for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I think the water issue would be a good first step.
Right.
So to try to ease their pain and, and see if we can accomplish that.
What about the plow, for winter?
They're not our streets.
Oh, that's, that's...
I mean, we, I, I mean, if, if, we, we can't do it, if we do it for you, then we have to do it for everybody that has, you know, condo associations. Am I correct, Eileen?
Eileen?
Eileen, sorry.
It's okay.
You're never here, it's hard to remember your name.
Oh!
I'm getting out of the way.
False, but, um, yeah, I mean, right now, the way that your, um, where these condos were set up is that they would provide their own services. And so, um, if you take that on, obviously that would impact city budgets and, and have, um, financial impacts there. I mean, you'd be setting precedents, and, and even with taking over this, the water here, you're setting potential precedents. And I'm not sure how long, um, you know, it might just be a patch for what might be the ask coming in the future from this particular association or other associations.
Kenny, where you guys are at, do you, what, what, what all, other, other than the plowing of the, what I, I'm gonna call the ingress and egress to your property, there's nothing else that the city does? I mean, the city does everything else, excuse me? Okay, so we're very similar, yours are very similar to theirs.
We, we've got fire hydrants right there, you know, everything, yeah.
Do you maintenance your fire hydrants?
Do we maintain them?
Yeah, so we do.
But see, they're city.
So, you know... Ours is, ours is the city? I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm just asking a question, I don't know what's ours and then what's the city, so. I mean, assuming they're using the same water, I mean, the fire hydrants are, I'm assuming connected to the same water, right?
Well, since, since the agenda specifically says discussion and not discussion and possible action, I would recommend that whoever on the city staff needs to crunch numbers and come back to us with, if we wanna take a little bite of this apple at our own peril, to be fair to Elaine, then we have to maybe go ahead and say, here's, here's the proposal, here's how much it would cost, and then we have to make a decision, cause we can't do that tonight.
No.
We've already eaten up, uh, this, a lot of time, and we're not even close to being done with the agenda, so. That's my, that's my, that's my recommendation. Well, there's no motion to be made, cause it doesn't, doesn't say there's any way to take action on it tonight. Maybe come, if we can have the staff come back when, when it's reasonable, in a relatively short period of time. This is how much it would cost to do the curb stops, and these guys say they're gonna pay X amount, and what do you guys think? How's that sound to everybody?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I, well, if we need any, any info for water and stuff like, I'll give that to, like I said, we run Metron, so I can get all the info and numbers of the each individual...
Units.
Units, or even the numbers on the Metron things, if that would help, or whatever, whatever we can do to help, uh, with Alcorn with that situation. And then like I said, it's, it's the curb stops, that's, like I said, I mean, obviously we have a budget, cause we only have so much money.
So we got the same...
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah. I have one last question for Elaine. If, if, if anybody in the HOA says, I'm not going with the, with the rest of the HOA group, I'm, I'm not, I'm not letting a curb stop bend my house or whatever, what, but, I mean, just because they vote on it, and by majority rule they agree to it, is that gonna jeopardize us, jeopardize us if we actually try to implement some kind of plan down the road?
Well, it, it depends on what their condo association docs say about who holds the decision-making power, so you might have one...
It's in the bylaws.
In the, in the bylaws, understood. But, I mean, they said they've already got X amount of people that refuse to pay their bill.
Same thing.
So if you have to have a quorum when you vote and say, uh, forty-five people showed up, okay, and they voted in favor of it, it's just a number. In favor of everybody, everybody's in, it's all, it's all one.
Just ten people.
Well, that's...
But it's something.
That's your problem.
It is my problem, you're right.
But you may have problems with outliers, I mean, you might have disgruntled people that either don't understand or just are opposed for whatever reason.
All right, do we, do we have a copy of those bylaws?
EasttownManor.org.
Okay, thank you.
Web page created it, done it.
Well, I guess I would go back to what I said earlier, though, I would hope that, um, I think the condo association should provide a, you know, deposit to the city to cover legal fees and, and engineering costs to do some of this initial preliminary, you know, evaluation work, so, um, so then when we come back, we, you know, cause it's gonna, it's gonna take time, so...
Absolutely, understand.
Now, what would you get an update on the cost then, or something?
I'm saying if you guys would give us a, some sort of a, you know, deposit to cover the, this preliminary research that our engineers are gonna have to do, as well as Elaine looking at, um, the legal aspect as to how we can potentially make this work, um, so we're gonna, I, I think that's something we'd have to, we'd have to get before doing all that, uh, research upfront.
When do we get that, something through email or phone call or?
We, we could talk about it after this meeting, yeah.
Matt, are you satisfied that with the, with the exception of possibly changing the meters to the official Alcorn meters, and these curb stops, that we don't have any other infrastructure that we'd have to take on? We don't have to tear up any ground, any new piping, any new nothing?
I, I mean, it's probably a more of a Nate question, honestly.
Okay, well, I guess I would like to know that before the next time we meet. Cause it doesn't, to me, I just, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a little jaded, I just can't imagine it's as simple as flip a switch and now they're on the city and everything's all tunky-dory.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm concerned too, a little bit about the age of the system, you said that it was built, that...
Cause once, if and when we take that on, that's, those are now, that, our, our job to fix that or repair that or whatever.
I think that's what we're, we're talking about, is taking over the water mains, you get a hydrant...
That's what I mean, I want all, I wanna see the whole scope of it, to your point. I wanna, I wanna see what all we're getting into.
Right, so when you look at this estimate, I mean, what of these things in this estimate, this million dollars is a wish list versus a necessity is a, is a real question.
Right.
And if you're going to be paying for infrastructure on private land, you really need easements, you need a, you need a water main easement, you need, um, probably a dedication of that system, so when you take it on, you take it on, and that responsibility, so. And then if this estimate is a year old, I don't know what kind of impacts that's gonna have as well.
Well, and I know the, the recommendation from, from Kupur talked about trying to televise the water and sewer lines, get a better ideas to, you know, what, what the lines are, what, what kind of shape they're in. So I think that's something else that we would, we'd wanna do as part of this, not next, necessarily the next week or two, but before we move...
Like I said, whenever it's ready.
That should be part of the negotiation.
Right.
You know, reviewing what the lines look like.
But we, but like to your point, we should not be incurring those costs. It shouldn't cost our, our city attorney or our city engineers, that, that's not, you know, that's not on us, that's on them, that's their request.
Right.
To see if it's even feasible, and that includes televised.
Correct.
So, and then, well, I guess we'll regroup when everybody's ready.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we've got a discussion and possible decision regarding proposed ordinance number twenty-five dash twelve, and ordinance rezoning the parcels, um, located thirteen East Prescott Street from RS-one single-family residence to RD-one two-family residence district. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We went through zoning, we've got, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Always wanna hear from Kenny?
Yeah, there was actually like two places that were on there, and they're gonna be put together, and so that would be, they were on the same lot almost, you know, they are on the same lot. So there's no problem with it, I mean, it's, it's from one single family to, you know, multiple families, so.
Fair enough.
Go through. Yep.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We've got a discussion and possible decision regarding fire department request to surplus a two-thousand-six Ford low cab with attached rollback bed with a reserve bid of twenty-five thousand. I'll make a motion to approve that. Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, and items I and J again, were, were gonna be moved on to a different agenda. Next we have, uh, closed session, let me read, uh, the statements, and then we'll get a motion. The common council may entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen-point-eight-five-one C to consider the employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or, or exercises responsibility. The common council may entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen-point-eight-five-one F to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where nineteen-point-eight-five-one B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Don't move. Second.
Okay, are we back in open session, I don't have the time, I have the time. There we go, seven forty-seven. We had two items in closed session, uh, the first item was the review of the city administrator, um, that was discussed, and, um, myself and, uh, the council president, Gary Payson, are gonna meet with Adam afterwards and discuss the review. On our second item, uh, no action was taken at this time.
Motion adjourned.
Record it.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.